Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Mr. President.
Chair. I rise for the pledge of remarks by Councilmember Palermo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here Tuesday, as always, as we meet here at the City Council. Let's talk about buzzwords. Transparency, strategic planning, quality of life, urban core. Maybe buzzwords to some, but truly it's how we work with the city to make it a better place. Just last week, I was reminded by, I was going to say Wise Man, but he's not that old. But I was reminded to talk with people, not to people. So, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder in the east wall of legislative chambers.
For the Omaha City Council, we appreciate your attendance here today. We look forward to hearing your remarks on our many agenda items and encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least to vibrate.
Item six through nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for Falling Waters located north of 200th Avenue and Madison Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six and seven, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R4 District. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item nine, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items six, seven, eight, and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name's Jeff Lamontain. I'm with E&amp;A Consulting Group for the engineering on behalf of the client BSR-FW LLC. And I didn't have any comments or statements, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved seven to zero. Items 10 through 16 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Majestic Point Two located southwest of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 10 through 13, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District, R4 District, R5 District, and R6 District. Item 14, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to incorporate this property into that district. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 10 through 16 are today. Proponents, please, Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin. 11440 West Center Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today is Kyle Bowle and Caleb Beasley of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is an 80-acre development located on the southwest corner of 168th and State Street. And as the agenda shows, it's a mix of residential uses and zoning classifications in this particular area. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. It's a 195-lot subdivision, by the way.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 17, a resolution to approve the Central Park Plaza Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 222 South 15th Street in an amount up to $18,83,809.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City of Omaha Plan Department. The two existing towers for the Central Park Plaza redevelopment project were originally built in 1982 for Canagora and designed by Leo Daley. They were former TIF projects, or it was a part of a former TIF project that paid off in the 1990s, and that TIF was used to construct the parking structure to the west. City Ventures is the developer and a tenant in the building, and the attorneys representing the project owner, City Ventures, is also here. The proposal reimagines and transforms the Central Park Plaza, also known as Apex, into a premier multifamily, or excuse me, multi-tenant, multi-tenant, make sure I'm clear on that, Class A office site downtown. It's consisting of a renovation, rehabilitation of the two existing towers. Also, a new third tower, which I do have a rendering. So this is looking from the east. So a new third, 80,000-square-foot, about 16- to 17-story tower will be constructed between the two existing structures. And this linkage will help to bring those two towers together and promote efficiency between the floor plates and each two existing towers. Public improvements will include streetscaping updates along South 16th Street. So I'll show this. So this is west, this is east, this is north, this is south. So streetscaping updates along South 16th Street and other surrounding areas of the property site. There will be a dedication of right-of-way along Douglas Street to allow for new parallel parking. So right along here, where you see the yellow highlight on the map, allow for a parallel parking that will support ground-floor retail. And this will be done without interrupting the existing orbit route. And then city staff and the development team are continuing to finalize public improvements along South 15th Street to include a drop-off site of some sort. So just to flip through some of these renderings. This is looking a little bit from the southeast. This is looking from the northeast. A little bit from the southeast, looking at the entrance to the building and where the drop-off area is. Here's a rendering of the original rendering of what that drop-off site would look like. It has been modified a little bit, and the discussions are still ongoing with staff as to what the final area will look like. Just another rendering. The redevelopment project will accomplish many goals of the city master plan, the 2030 Downtown Master Plan, and other general redevelopment goals of the city. The proposal will repurpose an older office building which has experienced considerable vacancy over 10 to 15 years and which lacks the modern amenities and floor plates for current and future office users. Our downtown had 40,000 jobs in the 1960s. They were primarily office jobs and other jobs within the service sector, industry sector, excuse me, service sector or industry that supported a vibrant downtown. Since then, downtown has lost over 20,000 jobs, has been, what has been documented, and most of those jobs were within that same service sector and industry. This redevelopment project plan proposes to bring multiple hundreds of office jobs and office uses back into downtown with potential to hold space for over 2,000 full-time employees. By increasing the number of employees in the city's center image, which is downtown, the central business district, this redevelopment project plan also increases the opportunities for residential housing and makes employment more attractive for those who live in nearby north and south Omaha. The TIF, total TIF eligible costs are just over $30 million, and that includes acquisition, rehabilitation, public improvements, and some A&E costs. There was a TIF contribution that was requested to go toward the downtown public improvement fund, and that is still being negotiated with the redevelopment agreement terms. The total TIF is approximately $18 million, and the total project cost is just over $104 million. The TIF project does comply with the community development law and our TIF program, and the TIF committee has given its approval. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West Center Road. Appearing today on behalf of the project owner, 222 South 15th Street LLC, which is an affiliate of City Ventures. With me today is Adam Raymakers. He's the project manager for this project, and he'll be overseeing the construction and redevelopment of this site. As always, Ms. Hadley did a really great job of describing the project, so I don't have a ton to add substantively. But I did just want to say on behalf of the entire development team that we appreciate all the efforts of the city staff, public works, planning department, mayor's office, and the law department over the course of the last several months as we've been discussing all the various aspects of this redevelopment project, and that my client is very excited about this project and what we believe will be a positive and long-lasting impact that will have on downtown Omaha. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, Cheryl Weston, 1811 Emmett Street. And I'm here as a proponent for this because it's going to bring development and growth to the area. However, I'm making this as a proponent and asking for your recommendation to go along. So when you vote yes, if you would have a recommendation to the owner, the developer, and so forth, to include an earnest effort in getting in contact and having some, say, to, or discussion with the North Omaha Pride Association. And I've given you the letter that I am emailing and have emailed to you requesting this to go along with the supportive information. And clearly, on page eight of the packet that you have received earlier, on page eight, it talks about employment. And the redevelopment project is proposed permanent employment for around 15 people to manage and maintain the building with nearly 400 construction jobs that will be created or used in this redevelopment plan. So there is the point. We want to be included in the construction and the redevelopment of this project. We're supporting this project, but don't forget and leave us out. Also, on page 15, says the same thing. And as Ms. Hadley had talked earlier, it keeps bringing up the employment that's going to come back to downtown, the employment of permanent employees, around 15 people to manage and maintain the building. We have people in our community that can be involved in this in being able to maintain the building as well as being able to be anticipated in the construction. It talks about 400 jobs with a payroll of over $17.3 million. TIF involves its taxpayers, our association members, construction, qualified individuals, general contractors, plumbing, electrical, trucking, all of those. So we're qualified. We're not asking for handout. We're asking for inclusion and involvement in this. And we know that, we're very much aware that there's not affirmative action, and we're not asking for affirmative action. We're just asking for an opportunity. And that opportunity can be given when each one of you vote yes with the recommendation to the developer, to the representative that was here speaking, to city planning, is let's get North Omaha involved in this. This is North Omaha. It may not be the North Omaha that you consider, just say North Downtown, but it's North Omaha. Also, if you look on page 27, again, you talked about estimated number of construction jobs created. 385. We've got 385, and we're not asking for all the jobs. We're just asking to be included. And we know that if you give your encouragement and your support to this request, it can be accomplished. Page 33 of the attachment to the city agenda today, number four. The project must be the object of the city master plan. Isn't North Omaha part of that city master plan? It includes job creation, application, urban design, all those elements. So again, revitalization of older neighborhoods, communities, business startups, business growth and expansion, and the densification of the urban core. North Omaha. The North Omaha that's north of North Downtown. And the last one on that page increases the city's share of metropolitan growth by providing an attractive alternate to office products and other submarkets. Again, North Omaha. What we call North Omaha. And we're proud of North Omaha, and we can do better at North Omaha if given that opportunity. So as I stand here before you as a proponent and the involvement of what Ms. Hadley spoke about, what its TIF plans are supposed to be set up, as, I'm just asking for your encouragement to the developers and the owner, the applicant, is what can you do to work with North Omaha and particularly the North Omaha Pride Association? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm sure you're all happy to see me. I wonder if you'll escort me out early today for being slightly off-topic. But this lady, as good a speaker she is, you know, I'm beginning to believe her. Why is everything west and south? I drive around North Omaha sometimes, and yeah, we've done very little out there. I'm beginning to see their point. Particularly in the last few days now. But the World Herald may be disclosing some things that have never been disclosed of before, that I have insinuated at this podium before, and I have been called a liar before. I've been excused before and escorted out, completely out of the building before. The tax increment financing has given somebody a break at my expense, at their expense. The World Herald article the other day said, oh, the building owners along that bus route where the library is going to get, and we got to build it so they will come, those property owners there, those business owners, will be paying higher taxes because of TIF. Excuse me. I think you owe me an apology because the World Herald has an inroads to you people that I do not. And it's time for you to stop treating citizens that way. You should have called that lady out of order for pretending to be a proponent when she's actually an opponent. You would catch me on that. And I'm going to end up with this. Although I'm kind of siding with them on some of this, I'm a little put out with Mr. Justin Wayne, who used to be here in Omaha, but he's now down there. Because I think he was one of the people that started TIF along with Mr. Ben Gray. And they've always said that they're going to have those discussions, but never did. Well, I've been down to the state legislature a couple of times lately, and I spent two afternoons in the last two weeks watching a debate on the state legislative floor about an issue that I sometimes talk about, and that's the Constitution, specifically Article Five.
All right, Larry, you need to stick to the topic here, which is TIF, right? Number 18.
Yeah, Mr. Justin Wayne brought TIF and racism into the discussion of a constitutional amendment process. I'm against that, too. And that should not be allowed.
Appreciate that.
He may show up here today, and he's going to reverse himself a little on TIF, and he's going to tell you the same thing, that you're destroying viable businesses down there by higher property taxes that'll force some of them out. But if you're going to give something away to somebody, start giving it away to North Omaha. And stay out of my neighborhood with your TIF.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Hello, my name is Kian, and I'm coming down as a proponent, and I will ask to speak if I could.
You're a proponent?
Yes.
So you missed the opportunity for proponents, but we'll come back to you and recognize you if you'd like to speak here in a minute, okay?
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Are there any other opponents here today? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Councilmember Johnson does have her light on, so I'll recognize her, and I suspect she'll call you up to get to share your remarks if you'd like to. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the young lady with the yellow jacket, would you please come back up? Thank you.
Hi.
Just name an address for the record, too.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Name an address for the record, too.
My name is Kian Low, and my address is 3606 Orchard Avenue. And I'm coming today as a proponent. I'm a native Omahhian, born and raised in the city. I am a part of a local logistics company down in North Omaha. I attended Central High School, and I have spent many years enjoying what downtown has to offer to its citizens and its visitors. I have seen buildings go down and buildings come up in the downtown area. It's exciting to see visionary projects come to life. In the proposal, it states that under the employment section, the project anticipates 400 construction jobs and will create businesses, opportunities, and new businesses. Sorry about that. I stand here today to request that an amendment be added in good faith to this project plan that allows a percentage of those anticipated jobs, whether it's hard construction or soft construction, be outsourced to the local businesses in the city. So we want to be a part of the redevelopment project as well. As a citizen, we visit downtown. We bring our families downtown. We spend money downtown. And it only seems right to allow us to be a part of the, to be a part of the development downtown as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Ms. Hadley, and Mr. Johnson, I have a few questions regarding your proposal here. First of all, I would like to say that this is a wonderful opportunity, a wonderful chance and great aspirations to develop the downtown area. I, too, agree that back in the '60s, '70s, downtown was booming. It was popping. I remember, I can recall the building off of, what, 16th, across from the Brandeis Building. It currently looks like a parking garage or some sort. At that time, back in the, I think it was back in the '70s, early '80s, there was a Walmart, and there were a whole bunch of departmental stores inside of that building. And I remember Omaha, downtown Omaha was just a great place to be. Definitely a place to do business and make purchases, and the economic opportunities were just outstanding. And so, you know, I'm really excited about this opportunity to restore that type of movement into the downtown area. I also agree that the TIF is a great opportunity, a great tool to use to make that happen, make that become a reality. We also know that with the TIF as a tool, there are certain characteristics that are incorporated in the TIF projects, such as jobs particularly to marginalized communities such as North Omaha, South Omaha, and other places in Omaha, Nebraska. We've had two different folks come up, Ms. Weston and the other, the last young lady, presenting a argument to be a part of this project. So I would like to ask both you and Mr. Johnson, what can we do to fulfill those requests?
I think I will defer that to Mr. Johnson since he's representing the project owner.
Thank you, Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road. I just spoke to Mr. Raymakers, as I mentioned. He's the project manager for the project. He's in charge of overseeing the construction and redevelopment aspects of this. I know from conversations with my client, they're in the process of selecting a general contractor for this project. The general contractor will then, of course, select the subs and be in charge of all of that, the hiring process. However, we are more than happy to have conversations with Ms. Weston and Ms. Low about possible opportunities for the folks in the local area to be some of those subs. We can also ask the general contractor to hold a job fair for a couple of weeks where you'll have an open opportunity to learn about the project and get involved in the project and maybe bid on the project and have an opportunity to work on the project. So definitely happy to provide that opportunity and have any of those conversations that anyone wants to have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, I just want to reemphasize the importance of folks in marginalized communities to have a good opportunity to have access to high-paying jobs. North Omaha has been lacking in high-paying jobs for a very, very long time. When we look at transportation and access to getting to those high-paying jobs, that makes it difficult for us to compete. Now we have something that we can actually compete and be a part of. And so I would really ask that you take that into consideration and not just do the application, just make an honest effort in making sure that those opportunities do exist, especially if there are contractors and employees that do qualify to fill those jobs.
Certainly.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, as long as you're there, I'll maybe just ask one question of you, too.
Sure.
I also appreciate that conversation, appreciate your willingness to meet with those groups and to maximize that participation. I do think that's important, too. This product's been on our, on the planning board and city council, Jennifer, quite some time, and it is substantial up on its own, $105 million in 400 construction jobs and a space for 2,000 employees downtown. So appreciate your, you and your clients' investment in downtown and making that happen. There has been some new news in the last week in this particular area to the east of your site, directly east of your site. That doesn't change anything you're planning. That doesn't change anything you're planning here or your timelines in terms of this project's construction, right?
No, not at this moment. The plan is to move forward. Obviously, it's huge news, and there's plenty to be left, as I understand it, for that product to come to fruition and all the details that come out. But as of right now, my client's plan is to proceed forward with this project. We're very excited about this project. City Ventures has officeed out of this building for five years, they've owned it for 15 months, and the plan is to make it, you know, the best Class A multi-tenant office building in downtown Omaha.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple of questions for you, Mark. In the planning meeting that I watched on this, and prior to, when this was originally in the planning process, it was in my district, but as everybody knows it, we redistricted, and now this project falls in my friend, Councilmember Johnson's district. But I know you and I had had some conversations on this, and as I was sitting in Jimmy John's yesterday, looking out the window at this project there, and my dad, as he retired as a mailman in 2000, his mail office was in that building. So I'm familiar with it, and through the planning discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're not going to build a third tower, they're going to bridge those two together, right?
That's correct, that's correct. So it'll be like a connecting tower, so it'll fix, as Ms. Hadley said, the floor plate issues that result from having those two narrow towers, it'll be able to open it up. And it'll, it'll fix that, if you've been in that building recently, you're kind of confused as to which tower you're supposed to go in. So now you'll have one entrance, that'll, it'll make it seem like one cohesive structure.
Okay. And again, Council President, President Fesserson kind of took my question there. There's, with the splash of the news of mutual potentially building, we're going to build there, you're still confident going forward with this project in spite of that?
Nothing changes as of right now.
Okay, thank you. A question for Bridget, if I could. Can you talk briefly, you had mentioned, and I know it was in the planning meeting, it was discussed, that that was the first project, there was a TIF project, correct? Can you give a, I know you can talk at length, but just kind of give us a summary of how that process worked and the end result of it, your conclusion that it was a success, I would, I would gather, correct?
So Bridget Hadley, City Planning, since that, that predated my time with the planning department, so I really can't speak to what happened with that project, but it was a TIF project. And when I read the documents, which you can find online, so all of this is public information, the TIF that was used for the Central Park Towers at that time was to construct the parking structure that exists to the west of the Central Park Towers now. So that was the purpose of the TIF, and I think, so it paid off in the 90s, the early 90s, so it really did not take a lot to pay off the TIF that was used. So that's probably the extent I could share.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and I know, connecting to a lot of those up here, obviously, it's connecting, again, before the news story of last week, the other thing going on downtown, that this was a great project, just on its own merit, to promote up to 2,000 jobs, I believe, and the construction jobs that come with it. And if a lot of those jobs are helping people in our communities, specifically downtown, North Omaha and South Omaha, it's really a great thing for downtown Omaha to revitalize that area and that building that kind of has a little sentimental value to me, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept this.
Second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 17 is approved, six to zero. Item 18, to consider a Class CK liquor license for Horseman's Park located at 6303 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please. I think we have the person by Zoom, correct? Let's see, Mr. Falsen, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Mark Falsen. I am an attorney at 1128 Lincoln Mall, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I appeared this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent Protective Association, or NHBPA. NHBPA has long owned the property at issue here, Horseman's Park, and for a number of years leased it to Omaha Exposition and Racing. Late last year, Nebraska Horsemen, NHBPA, actually became the license holder, applied for the license for live racing and simulcast, and that became effective January 1st. As a result, the lease between OER and NHBPA, my client, terminated at the end of 2021. So in essence, NHBPA just reassumed its authority over its own property. It continues to operate the premises in the manner as previously operated. We do not anticipate any material changes in the manner in which it's operated, and we hired the vast majority of the employees from OER. We would respectfully request that the resolution be approved, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, and thanks for that background. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
We've got a request to remove, remove number 19 from the consent agenda, so first we'll take items numbers 20 through 31, and those public hearings were held on January 25th. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
And I'll take number 19, which also had its public hearing on January 25th. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Bagley abstains.
The public hearings on agenda items number 32 through 55 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And we do have the applicant for number 32 by Zoom, Mr. Segreikas, if needed.
Hi, my name's Alex O'Handlon, 3010 Lincoln Boulevard. I wanted to comment on agenda item number 42 in support of agenda item number 42, which is a resolution to pay RDG to do the Affordable Housing Action Plan. And I'm in support of this. I just wanted to say that I hope this action plan will result in policies on both the city and state level that will help us tackle the issue of affordable housing in Omaha. One such policy might be an amendment to community development law that creates affordability requirements for developments that use TIF. I'd like to see us use this action plan as an opportunity for city officials in the planning department, the mayor's office, city council, and residents and state legislators to come together to draft and introduce legislation like this. Furthermore, I'd like to see the city lobbyists advocate for this and other policies during the 2023 legislative session. I think this policy and others could help to circumvent some of the issues facing our city's development process, such as displacement and a lack, and a lack of economic diversity in new developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents on these items, 32 through 55?
Eric England, Planning Department, since Alex came up and spoke, I just want to mention that planning staff and representative of RDG consultant is available for any questions on item 42.
And Eric, as long as you're there, let's, let's do that, because I was going to highlight this item as well, because it is very important, I think, to the city council and the city to pursue affordable housing strategies. Not only is it required under law to do this study, but we want to see this move forward throughout the city, and I think there's great potential right now between all of our, all of our nonprofit and for-profit partners, as well as our ARPA funding that's available in the spring. So if you wouldn't mind giving a little more meat on the bones about the plan, the timeline, the public engagement, all those things?
Sure, yeah, I can touch briefly, and then we have others here that, that can also touch on it. So yes, this springs from a legislative requirement that will, is due by the end of the year, but we are excited, this is something that there's a lot of conversations about, the need for affordable housing, more conversations about all types of housing throughout all of our districts and throughout our entire jurisdiction. So it's a very important topic that we are looking forward to being engaged with, with the community, with our partners. We do have Amy Hossi here representing RDG. She could touch on, you know, some of the, the ideas. Obviously, a large component of this project will be public engagement throughout all of the districts and citywide. We want to hear from the public, we want to engage with partners, and we think it's an important element. So I'd open it up. I don't know if you have any specific questions on, on timeline. We did, I guess while I'm up here, we did issue an RFP this past fall. We had seven interested companies reach out. We interviewed the top four, and RDG was selected as the highest in best consultant. So we're excited to bring them on board and, and ask for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Hossi.
Thank you from Mr. President and fellow council members. Amy Hossi with RDG Planning and Design, 1302 Howard Street. Excited to be here with you today and discussing this very important topic to all of our communities and really all residents across the state of Nebraska. We are, as Eric shared, we're looking at a timeframe that will get us wrapped up in plenty of time to meet the end-of-year deadline that we need to be at, and we are already beginning to outline the different ways in which we can engage community residents across the entire city. We are hoping to start that and kick that off here in the early part of the spring and of winter. So we'll be looking at multiple different tools, from in-person events, as much as we can do that, to online activities and lots of different ways that people will be able to share and give their input into the process.
And as we were speaking this morning, your company also just completed a plan, similar plan for the city of Lincoln, correct?
Correct, yes. We just completed the Affordable Housing Action Plan in late 2020 with the city of Lincoln. That met all the requirements for LB 866, so it was the first one completed in the state under that new legislation. We've also had the pleasure of working with communities all over, our team has communities all over the nation, including recently completing the statewide housing study for the state of Kansas and Johnson County within the Kansas City metro area.
And you're aware of the significant work that's already taken place here in terms of the Sherwood Study and the background?
Yes.
And I think a lot of the statistics you'll be seeking to incorporate, so in some respects, it might give you a head start, but your study will, in the other day, produce some recommendations around public policy as well, right?
Absolutely, yes. And if you've had, for those of you maybe have had a chance to see the Lincoln Study, that is a core component of our philosophy of this, it's, it's got to be more than just about crunching the numbers and telling us things we maybe already know sometimes, but framing that around, then what are some policies and actions that we can take to move our community-wide goals forward?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other proponents or opponents on 32 through 55 today? Seeing, seeing none, public hearings are closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, this question is for Ms., I'm, can you restate your name?
Hossi.
Hossi?
Yeah.
Amy Hossi.
Thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, what public output or input will you collect from the, from the citizens of Omaha, Nebraska? Is there a plan of action in where you're going to go about gathering that information?
Yes. So one of the very first tasks we have is to develop a community engagement plan, which we'll be working with staff on, for them to review and approve, and can easily share that with all of you, too. We've already started to lay out some of the initial ideas around that, one of them being that we will hold a series of at least 16 listening sessions, in addition to that, a number of open houses, and those open houses will be specifically making sure that we're holding those in each of the council districts. So we would love the opportunity to coordinate with all of you with regards to those open houses, and also then have some online opportunities where for those who prefer to engage, and as I often describe it, in their slippers at 11 o'clock at night, can also do that.
Okay, so that community efforts that you'll be making, will that extend beyond community organizations?
Yes, the open houses will specifically be open to anybody in, in Omaha who would like to attend those, and again, they'll be moved around the city so that they're hopefully easily accessible to residents and residents in their neighborhoods. I find that people often, when doing planning projects, they want to talk about where their neighborhoods and the places they know best, so I find it best if we can actually go out and engage them in the places that they know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 56, in ordinance to approve a lease agreement with 1401 Jones LLC in the amount of $465,000 per year for public library facilities, use communication and support, abuse communications and opposition.
The vote on number 56 can be today. I first want to recognize either Mr. Warren or Mr. Anderson. I think they had a message from the mayor, they wanted to read into the record for her testimony, before we have comments and questions from council members.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham, Deputy Chief of Staff, and I'll call upon the presence of both Troy Anderson and Tom Warren in our office to answer any additional questions you have. But we did want to take an opportunity to read into the record a statement from the mayor to the, to the city council regarding this item. Thank you. Mr. President and city council, based on the recommendations of Himmel and Wilson, both in 2010 and again in 2017, which took into account significant public outreach and community involvement, I believe that the property at 1401 Jones Street satisfies the recommendations of the Omaha Public Library Facilities Master Plan and presents an incredibly exciting opportunity to create a world-class downtown branch for years to come. This recommendation comes to you with unanimous endorsement of the Library Board of Trustees, the Library Director and Administration, and the Library Foundation Board. I encourage you to vote yes on the lease agreement being presented to you today. The widely recognized and highly regarded library consultants, Himmel and Wilson, can be quoted as saying, "Public libraries serve people." Therefore, the number of people being served, or the service population, is the most important criterion used in library planning. The 2017 Facilities Master Plan update executive summary is where that's derived from. An examination of the downtown library service population tells us that a significant number of users originate from the south and west of downtown. It could be argued that then it's only in the best interests of the people being served that a branch library be located in closer proximity to its service population. As we negotiated the terms and conditions of the lease agreement, we took into consideration the potential for alternative downtown library development opportunities in crafted language, which provides the city with the ultimate flexibility. According to Section 3.05 of the lease agreement, the city has an option to terminate the lease at the end of five years. If an alternative library development opportunity is not identified in the first five years, the term of the lease is a period of 10 years, which then allows the city an opportunity to, again, identify an alternative library development opportunity or renew the lease for another term. With that being said, I assure you that my office will continue to entertain alternative downtown library development opportunities, including either construction of a new standalone branch library facility or inclusion of branch services into new mixed-use structures, and that should the opportunity present itself, we will present those opportunities to the Omaha Public Library Board of Trustees, Omaha Public Library Administration, and city council for their review and consideration. Signed, Mayor Gene Stotter.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kevin, probably have you stay close by at least, maybe. So one of the things, and this letter does highlight this, and we talked at length about this, both at- and we talked at length about this both at the pre-council meeting as well as in the weeks leading up to this. I think the lease option is really kind of the, and it says here in the letter, too, but I'll use my words. I think it offers us the most flexibility in addressing a branch location for the downtown area. One, if we go forward with this and we have an option to let the original term run its course and take advantage of the renewal options within there. Or we can also take an early option to terminate at the, really at the end of the fifth year. I have to give that notice before that, but... And then we also have the option to purchase. And then the last one is that we could let the term expire if a new opportunity or a better opportunity presents itself in the future. I think I did this a couple of months ago, it seems like. And then I've done it on occasion from time to time. And I just did it again after pre-council this morning. But I did a quick survey of buildings in the downtown area in excess of 20,000 feet. And I know what we're really looking for is something north of 35,000 to 40,000 feet. But I wanted to kind of catch a wider, cast a wider net if possible. So buildings in the downtown area that met that very limited threshold included 1102 Harney, which is, actually, used to be able to get some good margaritas and tacos there. That was Michael's. But that's actually commercial on the first level and then multifamily on the levels above that. So really, that's an investment sale, so that's not going to work. Then you have 1202 to 1218 Jones Street, which is the Fairmont Dairy Building that is 123,000 feet. So that's probably not a likely candidate as well. And then you have the 1818 Leavenworth, which is, it's called the Vantage Point Building, which many, many people may be able to place in their mind. It's on about 18th and Leavenworth, on the northeast corner of that intersection. It's a 37,000-foot building that I think, as long as I've been in the commercial real estate business, has been listed for sale. And I've been in the business for more than 20 years. And that's, actually, that's not a good opportunity as well, too. So I think part of the reason I bring this up is that there was some discussion as to what other options were investigated, whether other options were available. And I would tell you, this survey that I've recently done is not very different than the ones that I've done in the past. There are limited options in the downtown area. But that doesn't mean that this, only because there are limited options doesn't necessarily mean that this isn't a good option, which, again, I think it is a good option. You've seen, I think, some commentary by other professionals in the business. I think Margaret Sullivan is one that we've talked to in the past. And you see some of her comments about how you can redevelopment, or redevelop properties, be it old properties, into beautiful facilities that can accommodate the needs that we're looking to accomplish in a downtown branch location. So again, I think I might have some other comments later, but I wanted to at least address the idea of really the advantages, really, of this lease opportunity that we're looking at for 1401 Jones for downtown branch library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to go on record as saying that all of us here in city council have received over 100 emails in opposition to ordinance 42858 as well as ordinance 42859. So I won't go through all of the many emails, but I do want to address one email that I think eloquently points out the opposition as a whole of the numerous emails that we received. On this email, it says, "To whom it may concern, my name is Cass. I have called Omaha home for five years. I am writing in opposition to items 92 and 93 on the January 25, 2022 city council agenda, otherwise known as ordinance 42858 and ordinance 42859. I ask that my comments appear as a part of the record. The project to move the WDL Clark Library Branch, create a central branch..." Let me see here. "...create a central branch completely upheaved how the library stores genealogy and historical collections. At least the location of WDL Clark Library Branch is unfeasible as it is expensive and unnecessary. These ordinances do not improve the services of the Omaha Public Library. Furthermore, they contain discrepancies. Create library facilities that are not accessible to the public and are in danger of natural disasters and are costly. There is conflicting information between the ordinances and the leases as written. Both 42858 and 42859 state the lease agreements are for a term of not less than five years. However, both lease agreements state they are for longer. For the 1401 Jones Street property, the lease is written for 120 months, which is 10 years. And the 3020 South 84th Street lease is written for 10 years and three months. This discrepancy speaks to the rushed manner in which these documents were pulled together. The Omaha City Council and Library Board of Trustees cannot be expected to make informed decisions on ordinances that contain such obvious discrepancies. The rush with which these ordinances have apparently been prepared and the initial secrecy of this project also do not inspire faith in the community. Both properties, 1401 Jones and 3020 South 84th Street, have significant complications that make their use as facilities for public use impossible. 3024 South 84th Street is to house Omaha Public Library's historic and genealogy collection, but is located in a floodplain and requires additional special peril insurance coverage. By moving these unique, irrecoverable collection to this site, we are actively putting these materials in danger and paying additional money to do so. When 3020 South 84th Street floods, the community will lose hundreds of thousands of items that are unique and vital to preserving the history and culture of this city. I have had the pleasure of working in archives at the University of Nebraska at Omaha. So I have seen firsthand the care and precision with which historical documents must be handled. The environment for storing documents safely has to be precisely maintained. Water damage is a significant threat to archives that is prevented when a facility like the one at WDL Clark is appropriately placed to minimize the risk of natural disasters. That this decision to move the historical collection was obviously not made by trained historians and archivists and creates unavoidable obstacles in preserving and sharing the collections. Splitting the library branch downtown and creating a central library does not solve any ongoing problems with the library system. A large project that has been in the works for years is to create a 13th branch in the southwestern part of Omaha to help make some of the pressures off of the overly busy Millard Branch and reach out to taxpayers in the area we need and want easily assessed library services. It seems that in the interest of aiding developers and private business owners, the project for needed 13th branch has been shelved in favor of spending funds on this unnecessary project to move and lease the downtown branch. The library system has plenty of opportunities for improvement. And ordinance 42858 and 42859 ignore these opportunities and instead create more problems for the library system in the city. Myself and others constituents would rather see the city invest money in improving the existing library branches and building branches where there is obvious need for one. Below are questions that I implore the city council members to consider when deciding on these ordinances. Where is the financial analysis that indicates a removal, a remodel of the library would be more costly than leasing and remodeling to separate facility? Question two, why were these sites chosen? How much consideration was given to the other options, particularly locations closer to the expanding Orbit Bus Line? Following the proposed timeline, how long will the downtown community be without library services? Why are contracts being issued to companies run by individuals who have clear conflict of interest? What other library projects are being shelved in favor of these two rushed projects? How can the Omaha Library use donations and taxpayers' funds to improve existing facilities and services? Why are we, as opposed to listening to trained archivists, librarians, and taxpayers giving so much agency to private developers who do not share the same goals as that of the public library system? Omaha taxpayers have consistently shared their oppositions to this project since it was announced and have been continuously ignored. The will of the public is to maintain a library at 215 South 15th Street. I ask that you vote no on both ordinances. Thank you for your time, Cassian Ry Limicki Elznik. Everyone knows that transportation has been a huge barrier going from north to south in Omaha for decades. Yet little to no effort has been made to address this. Now, you may ask, what does that have to do with the leases? Well, how will individuals get to the new location? Public transportation, once again. We have marginalized communities that need and use the library more frequently than individuals that have meaningful jobs. Their money that they have is at a much larger scale than these individuals in marginalized community. So at this time, I'm, again, going to say, a vote of yes for this lease is also a vote to vacate the library. And my, you know, when I was running during my campaign, I always told or always said that I'll stand for you, but I need you to stand for me. In this ordinance, these two ordinance before us, I'm going to have to vote no. I make a move that we vote no on those two ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I was wondering, first, do we have somebody from city, from legal? I don't know, Mr. Cooley, if that's you, or somebody that helped draft the ordinance this year?
Matt Cooley, Law Department. Not to be vague, but it depend on what your answer is. Ms. Johnson is also here for specific questions on the lease, if that's what you're asking about. Other matters, I can try and help out.
Yeah, my question would be, are there any issues with the leases as written?
The Law Department has reviewed the leases. There are no issues from the Law Department who helped negotiate these leases. There are no concerns from the Law Department on their validity and worthwhileness.
Thank you. And I think the leases actually give, there's just options in the leases, which is why there's, it's 10-year lease, you have a five-year option with another five-year option, you have buyouts. So they're not inconsistent, they're just, there's some different options in the lease.
Matt Cooley, Law Department, yes, that was Ms. Taylor's doing, was to give the city as many options as possible in terms of how we would utilize the lease.
And I think what, at least what I heard this morning was, basically, these leases are extremely flexible for the city if we were to decide to do something different. Or if we decide we love what we have and we want to make it our own, we have the option to even purchase as well. Is that right?
That's correct. Our leases are designed to give the city flexibility with the use of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. And then, is there anyone here that, somebody addressed the floodplain earlier today? But I would like to have that on the record. Mr. Fanslock, if you could come up?
Good afternoon, Dave Fanslock, City Planning.
And Mr. Fanslock, can you please, because, you know, the email we just heard, it sounded like it's imminent any day now. That entire building on 84th is going to be underwater. Could you address potentially the floodplain? Tell us how old that building is, how long it's been standing? I know I, I think it's been there since I was a kid, I think that...
Sure, while you're a little younger than I am. But the building, according to our records, according to the Douglas County website that we use for our records, the building was built somewhere 1973, 1974. And we have been regulating floodplain since 1978. The data that we use from FEMA that we regulate to, is maybe a better way to put it, shows that that building is not in the floodplain. Some of the parking lot to the east, not the parking lot directly adjacent to the building, but the larger parking lot, that larger parking lot, part of it to the east is in the floodplain. But the building itself is not.
And to your knowledge, has that ever, have they ever had major flooding issues right there with the building?
You know, there was some flooding back in the 80s along that creek, but I can't tell you what buildings were wet. But it's not in the floodplain, according to our records, it never has been.
Okay, thank you. That's, I wanted to just make sure that that was clear.
You're welcome.
Is anyone here that could address how they will take care of the transportation of the materials, the care of the materials in the building? Anyone from our library here?
We do have Ms. Marlane by Zoom, if you want to ask her that question.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, Laura, can you unmute yourself and then I'll call you back up, Mr. Anderson?
Hello. I can't address the technical questions about those issues. I can say that we've, my staff have seen the sites and both locations are large enough for us to house the materials we need to house. And we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to offer access to the historic and genealogical collections at 84th and Frederick. We're still not sure if that'll be through open hours or through appointment, but those collections will be available.
And then what steps do you take, I mean, are you, how is the collection maintained now at the WDL Clark?
The special collections are not kept in archival quality space. We just don't have that set aside at the main library. So any conditions at the ShopCo site would be pretty similar. We'll have air conditioning and heating. And there's space for getting collections off the floor. So there's additional storage. And that's how they'll be maintained. Ideally, with a new central library, we'll be able to move our special collections in the rare... and the rare pieces into climate-controlled conditions that are more appropriate for those materials.
And you know, you kind of jumped ahead, which is where I was going to go because what we haven't discussed today and we didn't discuss kind of last week because it's come up, but the plans that came out for the new central library at 72nd Dodge, is that where, is that where these collections you foresee housing in the future?
Yes.
And that's going to kind of be, I don't know, I, when I looked at that, the building that we're working with Heritage on, I kind of thought of it as the Henry Dorley of all libraries. It's kind of like the zoo that we have. I think that this library, especially working with the, well, I would say internationally renowned architects and library specialists, that's kind of where you would envision keeping all of those collections in a brand-new space that's climate-controlled and everything else. But in the meantime, you will make sure that the collections that are kept at 84th are in a place where they can be maintained with little or no, you know, potential for damage?
Correct.
And you're confident that you can do that?
Yes, we have been and we will continue to do so.
And I understand, I know your commitment to libraries, to the collections and to those things that you care deeply about those. So I have no doubt that you will ensure that those collections are kept well and aren't destroyed. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I guess what I, what I want to say, what I've heard is we have the opportunity to renovate an old building, I believe built in 1910 at Jones Street, which normally we would have a whole bunch of people here wanting to save buildings and love historical buildings, which we have, I have heard multiple times from hundreds of people over the years, whenever we're discussing a building. And I look to see what, what has been done to the buildings, like at Millworks, just on the north side. Absolutely amazing when you look at what that building looked like before and now what it looks like now with that kind of development. That's where we need to be focusing on in our downtown and having, renovating those buildings. I do not consider the WDL Clark Library a historic building. The architecture is, was done in the seventies, it's not historical. And I believe that if a building is younger than me, then we should not be calling it historical. So you know, this is a, this is a prime opportunity for us to take something, and I think I heard last week, somebody used the term, or how they envisioned the new library on 14th as kind of a cultural artistic place, where we're going to renovate that, where it's going to be, you know, renovating a historical building, but then kind of putting a new, kind of a new flair on it. I think that this, actually this new library that we have is going to be better for all so that people can actually enjoy the library. They can use it for better internet service, which everybody is wanting. All of our libraries are used for that. And we also seem to be kind of forgetting where they think that this is the only, where people think this is the only library in the area. But we have the Washington Library, the Benson Library, the Florence Library, the Willa Cathar Library and the South Omaha Library. So I mean, we have five other libraries. This isn't the single only library. So if we moved a couple of blocks, you know, I got emails that made it sound like that nobody will have access to a library by moving this one just a couple of blocks. I think what people will find is they're going to fall in love with not only the new downtown library, but the library at 72nd Dodge. Maybe there's going to be a few growing pains along the way, but I'm fairly confident that we have people that care a lot about our libraries. I know Laura Marlane is one, she's a fabulous director. The Library Board of Trustees and the Library Foundation Board, those are all people that truly care about libraries, about citizens' access to libraries. They are, many of them are business people too. And those two things actually can work, those two things work together. I believe that the developers that are developing downtown Omaha care about our libraries and care about making sure that we have a great new downtown library and making sure that we have a centralized library at 72nd Dodge that's actually more convenient for more people in our city to get to. Especially at the hub of 72nd Dodge with, with Orbit and transportation, that is actually the best place to put it because all the citizens of Omaha can kind of get to that library to where somebody out in Elkhorn, it may be a lot more difficult for them to get all the way downtown. I think that this just provides a lot of opportunity for us. We have to kind of look at the big picture as well. And I understand that people don't like change. I remember when we were going to, you know, close down Rosenblatt and move it to its current location where we have TD Ameritrade, which will now be known as, I believe, Charles Schwab. And that's turned out to be great. It's been great for our downtown, it's been great for our development. We have a convention center at this point that's one of the few in the United States that actually operates, you know, in a profit and not in a deficit. So we've, we've done a lot in our vision and fulfilling a vision for downtown that started decades ago. And now we're continuing that vision. And I think we all have an obligation to make sure we continue to do that. We can't get caught up on just one building or moving something a couple of blocks. We have to look at the bigger picture. And I am very confident that I think in the end, there may be people that are objecting to it now, but I think and I hope and I'm fairly confident are going to be very happy with the end, with the end result, just as we've seen, just as we've seen in the past. So that is why I am supporting this. I have talked to many people, I was just at a lunch yesterday with over 50 people who were all extremely supportive of this. So sometimes you'd get emails, but I actually go around, talk to people, go meet with groups and I discuss this, what are your thoughts? What are your thoughts about what we're doing with these things? So I've had a lot of feedback, other than just some emails. So I believe that a number of people, if not the majority, are actually in support of the growth that we see and the vision that I think the mayor is carrying out for our downtown area with the help of nonprofits, for-profits and all of us kind of working together in these public-private partnerships that really have made Omaha the city that it is today. So I look forward to our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak to a couple of items as well that were brought up in the email that Ms. Johnson read. There was a mention in the email and then also there was a testifier, a person that came up last week that was talking about the Southwest Omaha branch. And that's important to me. I am living in a library desert, if you will. We have no libraries in the Southwest. But I did look, in our CIP, we have budgeted $15 million to invest in a library for my neighbors that live out in the western part of our city. And that's slated to be done in 2023 if we can find the right property and we can get all the ducks in a row. I believe that that will, that will happen sooner than later. Clearly, our busiest branch is the, is the Millard branch. And that's where I go today. And I look forward to spending time out in the, the farther west brand-new branch out there and being a part of a world-class library system. And then it was also mentioned, Amy mentioned about the 110-year-old building. I've been a member of Restoration Exchange, or what was called Restoration Exchange. It's a group of people that believe in preserving old buildings in our city. And this is a perfect example and a perfect opportunity for us to preserve a 112-year-old building and use it properly, use it well. And the, the structure and the bones of the building are clearly suitable for this use. And I think we can do a world-class, a world-class building there at 14th and Jones as well. So I too will be voting in the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. As my colleagues have done, I've spent a lot of time deliberating on this and talking to multiple folks beyond the emails that we get. And that includes our city staff, Kevin Anderson from the mayor's office, multiple constituents. In fact, I got lobbied about two minutes before a meeting from the Foxes that do great work for Field Club Neighborhood Association that are in my district. I've spoken to business owners and people that are involved with this and trusted advisors that I know in my life that even have been in politics at one point or another. And a lot of things, as we go through this process, and I, I really have enjoyed digging in and learning more about it by listening to people. And as I had mentioned in, in prior meetings, there's a lot of sites beyond 1401 Jones Street. And the arguments made for that location, some of them are good, I believe. They're well-intended, but as I look around, there's a lot of locations, I'm just going to, I'm going to mention them again. The Civic Auditorium site, 15th and Douglas where the old UP was. And of course, everybody knows that the 18th and Capitol, the Civic Auditorium is an empty site. 24th and Dodge, 11th and Pier Street, the old Pulsal Annex Building. Even the Clorinda Apartments that were a controversy that somebody around the council years ago that went through. I, I had a good, and I want to thank Kevin Anderson from the mayor's office that he's been patient and fair and tried to answer the questions the best he could based on what the marching orders from his boss that he, he had to bring. And I understand that, I'm not saying that in a bad way. We had discussions on the owner's rep agreement. I was trying to see if there was some kind of avenue that we could do where if we committed to a five-year or 10-year lease, that during that timeframe, we can get some kind of ironclad agreement that has teeth in it that says, we will try to get a, a contract to get either an architect or engineering firm to get a site different than 14th and Jones. One of these other locations, the searches they did were done in a matter of months. I think if we had better deliberation and discussion, we could have had, you know, information to share with the council, which would have included the concerns besides what's at 1401 Jones, but new considerations. Are there, are there other searches we can do to find a better spot? Instead of being thrust into this time crunch where we have to vote on this or everything's going to be a disaster? It would have been nice if the council could have gone through that and had regular updates and working with the mayor's staff to say, here's according to report, here's what we're finding, here's what we learned that's out there now that we didn't know before. And I think that could have been a process that will work good, at least in my view for this council, as we went through this process. And I, I want to be clear, the announcement that the mayor made with Mutual of Omaha and respect to that last week, it was a, a huge announcement. And I have, like many people, well, especially in my District III, is I looked out my bedroom window to the south and I could see Mutual of Omaha. That's where my aunt and uncle worked their whole lives. We just buried my uncle last week, he lived a good, long life. And he was proud to be a Mutual of Omaha employee. So I want to tell my friends in the business community in Mutual, I think it's great that you want to invest in downtown Omaha. In no way am I against Mutual wanting to do that because I believe that that's great for the anchor of the face of Omaha. But also where my uncle and aunt retired from and many of my neighbors from Webster Street and Gifford Park that love to call that home because of Mutual, the backfill that's going to be done on that development if all this happens will be great for my district. It'll be great for job and economic growth and the other things that are going to come with it. So I want to make sure that's clear for everybody out there listening today. In respect to number 56 on this, after, again, I want to thank everybody that I talked to and they know who they are. It was a process that I, I really, again, spent a lot of time going through and thought about. But in respect to number 56, I'm not going to support this today because of, I believe we can find a better spot that we can be patient to get there. And I know there's moving parts here, but I am putting it in my mind that the 14th and Jones, I'm voting against that, hoping that we can find a better site. And we're a city that can do a lot of great things in motion together and I'll look to supporting that as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yeah, there was a motion on the floor.
For, yeah, for clarity, you got a motion to deny, correct?
Yes, and can I get a second on that, please?
There was no second. Motion to deny did fail for no second quite some time ago.
I made, I moved that, I moved that this motion failed.
All right. We need a, we need a clarifical, clarification here, either by the city clerk or the city attorney. There was a motion to deny quite early on that did not have a second. I believe we just had a motion to approve at the same time there might have been a second. Mr. Cozy, your interpretation of that for us, please?
I believe the clerk and I are in agreement on this. The initial motion to deny made by Councilmember Johnson fails for lack of a second. I think a significant amount of time elapsed between her initial motion and when Mr. Bagley made a second on it. So the pending motion before the council is the motion to approve made by Councilmember Melton and seconded by, I believe, Councilmember Harding. So in sum, the initial motion made by Ms. Johnson fails for lack of a second.
Okay, thank you. That's what's currently on the floor. Mr. Plameral, you're recognized.
Mr. President, let me see, there, okay, it's working. Poor execution, right? That's all that needs to be said about this whole entire process. And I could just stop right there and we could take the vote. I don't think many people in this room that are involved, regardless of what your job title is or who you work for, would agree. Poor execution. But luckily for you, I'm not going to stop right there. There's communication as well. We expect it from the citizens, we expect it every time you come in front of us for, regardless of what you're asking for, regardless of what department, regardless of what plans, we want to see them. We want public meetings, we want to see the plans, we want to bring you back, we want to ask about them again. But we didn't get it for item number 56. And I'm, I'm trying not to jump around, but it isn't just as simple as a lease agreement for 56. There's a reason there's a lease agreement on our agenda. And the reason there's a lease agreement is because the wrecking ball's coming. And if you don't want to hear it, close your ears. The wrecking ball's coming, the library is going down. That didn't come before us. That was decided before it came to us. That's not what's in front of us. We will see plenty of opportunities for that space of our main library that we have now, city-owned main library, by the way. But it's not today. It's about the lease in front of us. And so when we think about the library being gone, I always find myself picking out the good on both sides. And I, and I really could on this lease agreement. I, I woke up this morning and I thought, gosh, what if this would have been brought before us six months ago? Would we even be having this discussion? We, we probably wouldn't because we would have brought the right people to the table. We would have figured out what we wanted, how it was going to work and how it wasn't going to work. But again, poor execution led us to where we're at today. And it's, we're better than that. We're not only better of a site that is in front of us, we're better than that as a city. the community is out an apology because I myself sat in these library meetings that people were asked to attend to all over the city. I went to one, I went to one because I didn't know what was going on and that's our job. I even got up in the meeting and I could tell library staff that was there, they didn't know what was going on. And it's hard for people to, to believe that, that somebody on the city council doesn't know what's going on. It's the truth. We, we do surveys, we talk to the community, we, we put out feelers on what's important for people. And regardless of what that is, I promise you, it always comes back, public spaces. Because they're important, these are public spaces. This is what the citizens of Omaha expect and deserve. This is what the citizens of Omaha expect and deserve. This isn't about stop and progress. It's really not. I'm all for a company that wants to relocate, especially being an urban core guy, to a property that's maybe better suited for them and maybe better suited for our city. I'm also excited about a modern streetcar. And again, I'm trying not to get these all twisted together because it truly is. And I could get off track again and talk about Heritage Services on their announcement of the main library moving to 72nd Dodge. But it's tough because all we have in front of us today is item 56. So when we make this vote today, we have to ask ourselves about this process. You've heard both sides, and there's no doubt. You could pick this apart any way you want. Is 1401 Jones a good site for the branch? Keep in mind, Branch Library. The main library is not moving to 1401 Jones. The main library is moving to 72nd Dodge. So keep that in mind. I've been by 1401 Jones more in the last two weeks than I've been by there my entire life. We went by there today at 1:30 on the way back from lunch. I can't, I can't not drive around it. And one part of me says, "We can do this as a city. We could really make this building nice." But the problem is it's gonna take a lot of money, and it's not our building. So if we own the building, then I'm all for it. We could make that, we truly could make that building world-class to fit into the downtown of what we're trying to sell our tourists on why they should come to the city. But it's not our building. So it's tough. And then I drive around it and turn the corner and I think, "Oh, my gosh. What in the world are people thinking?" But this is why people get together and decide stuff. So I asked earlier, and I want clarification because, again, poor execution means I still have a lot of questions. And so I'm gonna have Kevin, if you would please, Mr. Anderson, come up. I want to ask you a couple of questions. Then I got some more comments and probably some more questions. We do have the lights on, but...
Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office. Thank you.
Thanks. So this is like a broken record where I thank city staff for all their hard work on everything you do because you're being told to do it and you get paid to do it. Now here's the but. But here's the problem. So I think you mentioned earlier, there's a library, there's an appointed, oh, that's kind of my question for you, but there's a, there's a board of trustees. Tell me how they're selected and tell me how many.
Seven appointed board of trustees, recommended by the mayor, approved by this council.
Sorry. Mr. Kuzi, can you verify how many people on the board of trustees?
For the library board? I believe it's nine.
Okay. That's what I thought it was. I apologize. I swallowed some gum about a half hour ago, and it's still about right there, so. Okay, so a nine-member, nine-member board. And how are, you said they were appointed by the mayor?
Recommended by the mayor, approved by the city council.
Approved by us, yeah. Nothing against these people. I know a number of them and they're really good people, but they're appointed. So is there another separate Omaha Public Library Board? And how many people and how they selected?
Probably referring to the Omaha Public Library Foundation Board, which does a lot of the fundraising associated with, with library system and programming.
How many people and how they get their job?
That, I believe, I cannot say for certain. I believe that is a volunteer basis.
Mr. Kuzi, sorry. I'm not beating up on you today. Are you aware of...
It seems like it. Matt Kuzi, Law Department. Are you asking how they become members of the library board?
Yeah, yeah. How do they get, who selects them and how many?
The library board or the library foundation?
Foundation.
I don't know about the foundation. The city doesn't represent the foundation.
Laura, you're still with us. If you could, please, answer that question. And I know I need to clarify, foundation. How many members and how are they picked?
Oh, God. I can't remember how many members. I believe it's 12. And the board populates itself. So they, they look for new members themselves. And people who are interested come into the foundation board.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And Mr. Palermo?
Yes, sir.
I'm in contact with Ms. Peters, who represents the library, the Law Department, who's informed that it is a private board. They are not city-appointed, as Ms. Marlane says. I think her term was they self-populate themselves, which would be accurate.
Okay. Is there six members?
Ms. Peters has not indicated that to me, so I cannot give you an intelligent or less than intelligent answer.
I'll just, I'll just tell you. I looked it up a little bit ago. Maybe right, maybe it's not, but I think it said six members. But that, regardless, I'm getting to my point. Urban Core Committee, how many people? How are they selected?
I don't know the number. Again, on a volunteer basis, private entity and board affiliated with the Omaha Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Fair enough. It doesn't member, it doesn't matter. I'm gonna get to my point. We hear of how this decision gets to us, whether it's the foundation, the library board, the Urban Core Committee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. None of these people are elected, right? You can't have it both ways. You can't have unelected people making decisions and people in the city of Omaha have to abide by them. So nobody that has made number 56 in front of us the best option is elected. So, you know, I did apologize for the public attending the meetings. But I also need to apologize for last Tuesday. Sitting here, a couple hours of public testimony, which really does mean a lot. I mean, I listen. But we all know Wednesday, it really didn't mean much. And it was one of them days where I left here and had to go home and take a shower because I felt so dirty. That's the position we get put in sometimes. How sad is that? I got a briefing on Friday. Friday. I got a briefing on Friday. There was a press conference on Wednesday. Sure, I'm smart enough to know. We got a underutilized city block that we own in a building that isn't the greatest building. We already know the main branch is moving. We got some people that have spent... How many months would you say we spent on moving the main branch to 1401, Mr. Anderson?
How many months do we anticipate?
No, like, how much time have you put into this to, for the move and to get the lease agreements in front of us?
Several months.
Okay. Three months?
The search process took about two to three months in our collective opportunity, organization, to analyze the real estate market downtown to determine what options are, and that is what's being presented here.
Okay. So, three months. We get a briefing four days before a press conference. We ask people to come and pour their hearts and try to get us to change our minds. But again, the wrecking ball's already coming. Not done. If you need to sit down, you can, but I'm not done. Here's our budget. Here's what we put into it as a city for people to look at, for us to go by. Here's the CIP, which is very important, which, it's not bound up, but it's still good. That's what we go by. It's important. People look at it. We make changes. We work on it. Here's the ARPA book I got. I mean, it's really nice. I've had it for a while. It's still in good shape, even though I just got it out of my car. There's an ARPA book that we give to people as a city, as leaders, to look at, to show what's going on. Here's something really small that was in my box today. Omaha Total Mobility System. Quite a bit, actually. Here's what I got in an email about this project in front of us. When I talk about poor execution, when I talk about the lack of communication, this is it. One piece of paper in an email that was printed out. The city doesn't work like this. We're better than that. Again, I know how this works. I've been through it. I've had a vote before where I voted against a street sweeper and the headlines the next day is, "By God, Vinnie doesn't like District Four streets and they should stay dirty." No, I'm not against a street sweeper. I think we should have city employees doing that job and stop contracting everything out we have. So here's the spin on this. This is what this contract means, number 56 here. If we vote against it, the spin is, "All those council members, they don't care about you. They don't care about your library either." Matter of fact, they voted it down and guess what? We'll get to it when we get to it. That's the spin. That's the reality of how this job works. So it's not just as easy as listening to calls, emails, texts, talking to people in the community. I talked to people last night and honestly, it was probably about 50/50. But it's not that easy because there's always an outcome you have to worry about. There's always an outcome of what's best for the city. And I promise you, this lease vote, regardless how it goes, should not determine or sway what we have moving forward in the city with Mutual of Omaha or the modern streetcar, whether you're for it or against it. I went to the library yesterday. I'll be honest, I got seven kids and they got great libraries at their public schools. Well, a couple are in private schools as well, but great libraries nonetheless. So I don't have a library card, but it doesn't mean I don't go to the library. I was gonna be a comedian in one life, but it didn't work, so glad I got a laugh. But I can still go to the library. I just can't get on the computer and I can't check out books. But when I go, I don't need to because I'm there to check things out. So I went yesterday on a Monday. Actually got caught by one of the news stations walking out just to see what was going on, to see, are people really there? Are people really using the library? They are. And again, would they still be using the site at 1401 Jones? Yeah, they may be. And regardless if there's transportation issues, we can certainly work with Metro. I know they would be willing to change some routes to make sure we got as many people at that site as possible. Sorry, Mr. Anderson. You guys weren't very transparent, but I got a lot of questions because people want answers. So if you could come back up.
Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office.
So with 1401 Jones Street, and there was a letter given to us. It's in the recycle bin because I recycle and that's where it belongs because that's what I think went into that letter. But if the mayor's indicated a willingness to look, looking for a downtown branch, like, who would be responsible if this failed today looking for another site? Would it be them groups I mentioned earlier that are appointed? Walk me through the process of, "This doesn't pass. You don't have a downtown branch. You're not gonna point at the city council if this doesn't pass." Walk me through how we're gonna get to another branch location and who's involved.
The mayor has just offered that her staff, including partners that have already been mentioned, will explore any and all opportunities for a, quote, "better" permanent branch location in the downtown market. And that process would be ongoing as we see development opportunities arise or opportunities for new standalone branches. The process being laid out in front of council today is in hopes and based off of our priority and commitments to the public to limit and minimize any disruption of library services to the downtown neighborhood market. And that is our biggest fear in this process, if this is not approved, that because of our opportunity to take advantage of a transformative project for downtown, for the city and metro as a whole, that through that process, we are left without downtown branch services. And to us, that would be very detrimental to public service for our constituents.
Okay. So just like I got done saying, there's gonna, there's gonna be a spin regardless. So another question for you. If 1401 Jones is approved, we know there's a base rent. We see that in the agreement. Tell us about the additional costs, common area maintenance, insurance, other stuff that would come up that we would be responsible for that's not in this lease agreement.
That's correct. If brought to the full 10-year term, I believe those total costs equate to roughly $8 million.
$8 million for the 10-year term?
Yes, including all those costs, triple net costs, things like our responsibility for maintenance and janitorial services in addition to base rent.
So not quite double what's in front of us for lease agreement, but a lot more than the $4.65 per year.
And I would add that many of those current expenses are what we currently pay for our owned library system as well.
Okay. The one that we own, correct?
Correct.
Okay. There's a big difference in what you pay on what you own and what you lease. But you know that. That's your job. So there's another light, but that's okay. We'll keep moving on. So again, poor execution leads to where we are today. I'm not sure how this will go, but I will say regardless, we do have some commitments that we're gonna do better because this public space and the library is extremely important. I've heard the mayor mention it in her speech before. I heard her mention it on her campaign speech, in her campaign speech, election night, how important libraries are. So I am sure that if this doesn't pass, she will not let the citizens of Omaha that need a downtown branch go without one.
And if I may, if it pleases the council, we will agree to disagree on the execution of this. These are our real estate decisions and processes of this city. And I would argue that the same process has been followed for other real estate recommendations that come with our public facilities for lease or new development. I think of some of our more current ones, including Fire Station 31 in South Omaha, the Police West Precinct where a real estate search was conducted. And that's frankly just hard to do in a public setting. It's hard to have those conversations because it leads to things like land speculation. It is difficult to do those kind of real estate searches in a process that's extremely open for public consideration because there are those and there's a process by which that can be taken advantage of and put the taxpayers at risk. So there's a internal process within City Hall to conduct that and make recommendations to the city council for their ultimate approval based off of the criteria established by the needs of that particular public facility.
Okay. And I appreciate you bringing that up because you're exactly right. We know that the mayor's office is responsible for real estate transactions. So with that being said, now that you're on the public record, if this passes, or if it doesn't, but let's say it does, we have other projects that are before us or soon to be before us that are big as well. Can I have your commitment that you're gonna update us every quarter, every six months on projects moving forward so I don't get four days on a briefing before I know?
Again, we'll have to agree to disagree. The mayor's office had reached out to council members individually before approaching the library board of trustees with this process before any announcement was made back in November.
Okay. Strike the last sentence. I'll say it again. Moving forward, can I get your commitment on the record to keep us updated quarterly? Moving forward, can I get your commitment on the record to keep us updated quarterly on real estate transactions that the elected body of the City of Omaha are not involved with?
To the extent we're able, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that because that would definitely not put us in this situation. And for your comment that we were briefed, that's fair. We were briefed. And I've been briefed on the Crossroads Site four times in five years. I've been briefed on the Civic Auditorium Site three times in five years. So you're correct, we did get briefed. We knew that there were studies going on from as far back as 2010. So you're right, we did get briefed. I stand corrected. But you know what? Them were just briefs. They don't mean anything. They don't mean anything until they come before us and you need our vote. And now you need our vote. So this is different. This isn't just a brief because we get briefed all the time. This is real life stuff for citizens of Omaha. So it's not just a brief. And when people say this was rushed, it was never rushed. You just never had the right people in the room. That's the problem. People have been talking about this project for long before I was ever briefed on Friday because Three, Six, Seven, Fox, World, Herald, they all called me telling me what it was. And then I literally get a text saying, remember, it's embargoed, don't say anything. Somebody said something, it's leaked. Are you kidding me? I have more respect for this seat than something that's embargoed leaking it out. Yeah, your boss sent me that text. I'm as sure as she did everybody else up here. Don't talk to me about briefs, that's ridiculous. The biggest problem with this process, we weren't involved. But now they're in front of us and they need our vote. Good luck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I think everyone has had a chance to talk at least once so far. I'm gonna insert some of my comments and questions, so don't go far, Mr. Anderson. Then I think there are more lights after I have a chance to speak for the first time. So I want to add that I do support what I think can be a transformative economic development project that was announced last week. 4,000 jobs, a new skyscraper in our city, an associated streetcar, public transit improvements. It's a compelling vision. But I want to make sure folks know that's not what we're talking about here today. Those items will take months more of public hearings and public engagement and city council approvals before those things can go forward. But what we are talking about today are the libraries and frankly, this piece of the puzzle has been handled very poorly. I agree with Councilmember Palermo in that respect. We were not briefed early on. My briefing consisted of a 30-second call, I think, from you, Mr. Anderson, that said, hey, we're taking this to the public, to the Library Board tomorrow, just giving you a heads up. Okay, that's fair, but that's not a briefing. And we were never briefed before the leases came on our agenda. And in fact, these proposed leases should never have been on our agenda. Went until this larger vision was presented to the public. There's obviously a connection. There were dozens of folks that testified here last week and didn't have the benefit of that information and context, and that's not right. That's not good public process and it certainly doesn't build consensus. And I think you're feeling that here today in the disparate comments from council members, not to mention the emails and contacts we've had over the last few weeks about this. Having said that, one does need to focus on what is before us here today and have a larger perspective overall, especially a city council president, so I'm trying to do that. And I agree with Councilmember Palermo, it's apparent the downtown library is moving. Whether these leases are approved today or not, that's the mayor's desire, that's the desire of the Library Board of Trustees. And that vacation can happen. What's before us today is where does it go? And does it go anywhere in the meantime? And so I want to talk about that a little bit more in depth because obviously, the proposals here are 14th and Jones and 84th and Frederick, which may be reasonable in the short term, but I'm not convinced they are the best sites in the long term. Mr. Anderson, I want to give you the opportunity to talk about a little bit, the discussion we had this morning, which was fairly lengthy in terms of when you knew you needed to seek a new site for the branch. Describe your search in a little more depth, what you found or didn't find, and what you think is out there other than just 14th and Jones downtown.
Yeah, so through a collective, sorry, Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office, through a collective office, or collective effort, including Mayor's Office, other city staff, the Urban Core Committee, which consists of the likes of developers and brokers out there, I'd say we did about a 10,000-foot analysis of those properties in the downtown market that were both listed and those potentially unlisted and not being marketed for sale. And out of that process came two sites that really, you know, we felt fit the criteria for our search really well, namely in times, in terms of accessibility and overall square footage with that target of 30,000 square feet that came directly out of the library facilities master plan. And out of that, one was 1401 Jones, which was actively listing, listed. One was a nearby property that was occupied by a business and not listed for sale or lease otherwise. And that's one that along with 1401 Jones, we really appreciated and liked and saw a lot of potential in. We had a process of engaging that property owner, but ultimately couldn't come to the terms that that property would then be for sale.
And in our conversation this morning, when we were asked you to convince us this was the only site that's currently available and the only site that you think could work right now, convince us of that.
Well, I believe currently we're working in a downtown market with about 6% vacancy rate, which is pretty low. Because of a lot of efforts, we have a tremendous amount of development pressures in the downtown and that's a good thing. But just as Councilman Harding had kind of recognized through some analysis, there's just not a lot of property out there that fits the criteria that we're looking for, 30,000 square feet on ground floor accessible levels that fits those needs and those recommendations as a public library system and public library branch.
And I believe Ms. Marlane had a comment last week that I thought was important to also recognize that what you're looking for is a branch because what the proposition is the main library is moving. And also since that time, there's been the announcement that they intend to move forward with a $100 million vision of what would be the main library branch somewhere else, presumably 72nd and Dodge. But that also has many more public hearings and approvals to go through and a lot more financing to go through, correct?
Correct.
Any idea what that timeline would be?
As laid out for the projected timeline with the associated public improvement of the modern streetcar, we anticipate the real estate entitlement process for the large part following shortly behind that. So we'll start to see some of the activity, of that activity in the next couple of months. Of course, much of that goes through Planning Board first before it comes to City Council. So we anticipate things like a redevelopment agreement approaching this council sometime late this spring, early summer of here in 2022.
And then he did forward some more information on 14th and Jones about our questions last week around public transit access, parking. There is a lot of parking now available in the immediate area, 90 exclusive spots, 35 other spots that are adjacent that we went and looked at over lunch. And I do appreciate the letter in the respect of its last paragraph that says, you are willing to reconsider if this is approved today at the five-year mark, if this is truly the best site or not, right?
Correct.
And at that point, there could be other opportunities. For example, the person who happens to own 14th and Jones also owns the Civic Site. I understand that's coming to our agenda here pretty soon. That could be a possible and possibly better site. Is that a reasonable proposition?
With one clarification, the city is still in ownership of the Civic Auditorium Site in the sense that, yes, we've got a proposal that's been announced that would then allow the same owner developer to ultimately develop the Civic Auditorium Site, but that's currently under city ownership. But yes, that is one of those opportunities that could be out there and could be explored.
But the trick with that and any other site, as you observed this morning and that I also fear, is in this mix, there could be a period of time and potentially a long period of time where there is no library branch downtown if these leases aren't approved today. Let's just say the Civic proposition was real and was a better opportunity after more analysis. That's new construction and that would take, what, three years?
Yeah, I'd say even that's an aggressive timeline in the sense that you'd go through a process of negotiation for acquisition or other forms of ownership, a, you know, design process as well as the process for actual construction. So three to four years is very realistic.
And what you've observed in terms of an alternative lease situation, of which you don't think there currently is one, even if there was one that identified the next, let's say, few months if these were declined today, there's no way you're meeting the timeline whereby the main branch would close and we'd be without service downtown for some extended period of time as well.
Correct. We would anticipate another two to three-month search process, again, of those both listed and unlisted, that, you know, maybe opportunities out there as well as another, at least a couple of months for negotiation of purchase or, you know, other lease, whatever it may be. And then again, going through the same process, design of tenant improvements and the actual timeline of construction.
And so I don't much appreciate getting put in that position, but I agree, that would be problematic for libraries, library patrons and for those that support the libraries like myself. And what I wanted to also introduce into the record here before I recognize other lights is there is an MOU that exists with the Library Board of Trustees that was signed just last week, does not come to the city council, but I wanted to enter this into the public record so folks can see it if they want to. Because I think it is also important to the consideration here to talk about our support for the public libraries and what this mayor may not mean to them in the future and to their immediate budget. And a few things I would note out of that MOU in item 3A is that should the requisite funding for the consult, design and construction and move of the W. Dale Clark Library from its current location to 14th and Jones and 84th and Frederick be accomplished, this will not be deducted from the Omaha Public Library's 2022 budget. So in other words, any of these expenses we're talking about today, the leases, the one and a half million dollars for improvements to 14th and Jones and the $500,000 at 84th and Frederick, do not come out of the library's budget, correct?
Correct. Or an appropriate, you know, boost to the library budget will be made. So the budget itself might be a pass-through, but nothing will be detracted out of these proposed expenses from the current operating budget of the library system.
Where do those funds come from?
We anticipate a number of sources and I can certainly, you know, ask for some assistance from our finance director, but we think a good majority of that can come out of general fund cash reserves.
It also says, it goes on to guarantee that the city will provide the same level of service or greater at those two new locations. I think that's important to point out and has been agreed to. The mayor's office will secure funding from other sources sufficient to operate both locations or place in the library if those costs are less, which I don't think they will be, but if they are less, the library can keep that money. If there are more, it does not affect the current library's budget, it comes from somewhere else.
Correct, yeah. And as noted, there may be some duplication that, but you are correct, we are splitting one facility into two and we expect additional expenses to come with that and our commitment is to, you know, essentially ensure that the library system is made whole through the budget process.
And what about 2023? Certainly, those are gonna lead to higher expenses for the library in 2023. Is their current base of service at least held harmless in that situation?
Correct.
And hopefully improved from my perspective. It does go on the note here for those that are interested, and I know people are interested in the genealogy collection, that that will be guaranteed as a public access point for use and review, and appropriate staffing to permit regular access to the public. And the last thing I want to highlight in here for now is that it does talk about what happens if you don't meet your timelines. And I don't think you will, frankly. It's a very aggressive schedule to try and move this building into two different buildings by, I guess, October 1st is the date. Should that not occur, what's the plan? There has to be some provision for downtown services in the meantime, even in a stopgap measure.
Yeah, we will look at opportunities for, you know, a base level of kind of transitional service to make at least some level of library service available. We'd have to explore that opportunity. And coming up on your agenda is an agreement with an owner's representative to help us all and to work with library staff, board of trustees, community stakeholders, to help ensure we're meeting the timelines as proposed. We do have proposed timelines from our reputable owner developer with a reputable construction contractor who's laid that out. So while it is aggressive, we've got full confidence in those entities that, you know, will be able to deliver. But it is a kind of new environment out there as it relates to things like supply chain that we've all heard so much about. So we have laid out a process by which we'll make every effort to ensure that at least some services are available if there is a, you know, interim period needed. But the way we have laid this out about the only time library services, special collections, archives, genealogy are taken offline is in the actual timeline it takes to move those to our two new facilities.
Okay. Thank you. So all these things do lead to tough decisions for council members today. I do think the public process was terrible. I do think we need to keep our eyes though on the big picture of all the moving parts we have here. And I share the fear that we may not have a downtown library in the short term should these not move forward. But I also share the interest in reanalyzing what's been proposed here today to see if it's truly the best option for our library system even in the short term. With that, I'll recognize Mr. Harding, your light's on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have Jay Naughtle come up for a second, please? Jay, I believe you're a member of the Urban Core Committee as well. We'll be discussing an item, a couple of items down the agenda on an issue that you're related to as well too, but wanted you to weigh in if you could on this opportunity.
Jay Naughtle, Naughtle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street, Omaha. To all of you, I've been listening to this for quite a while. I've talked to many of you. I've been involved in quite a few Urban Core meetings. I happen to chair the Chambers Urban Core Committee. So we've been working on an overall strategic plan for the core of the city for about the last four years, started in May of 2018. And the engagement in that has been terrific, city staff, the mayor, many people from the business community, many people from the community at large, from all parts of the city who share a common interest in trying to help the core of our city move forward such that it will lift the rest of the community in the region. So these are, someone was talking earlier, you all were talking earlier about real estate matters that the city's involved in, or you could say the county or even the state, private institutions, as well as boards like the Airport Authority or MECA and things like that, the zoo. It's important that that dialogue take place in a thoughtful, careful, thorough and exhaustive manner. But it's very difficult to do it in the public domain because there is speculation, there's land speculation, if it's conversations of a certain nature. There's also price escalation if it's a search or a discussion about different kinds of facilities, whether it's the acquisition of a building or leasing a facility. So I certainly appreciate all the work that has been done, all the discussions that have taken place. And, you know, with respect to the two facilities that have been identified, what I know, just starting at 84th and Frederick, that's a part of the city I happen to live in, the buildings are not in the floodplain. Some of the parking lots are. I can't think, I was sitting here thinking about who's the oldest in the room. Dave happened to mention that he thinks that there was a flood that may have affected the parking lots in the 80s. I don't really, I remember big floods in the 80s, but I don't recall any problems with those buildings. And it's typical- And it's typical that a piece of land might be designated as in the floodplain. It's even more typical and common that a building footprint is raised up out of the floodplain. We happened to do that in Exarban Village. So I don't think that there's, in my opinion, any issues with the Eighty-Fourth and Frederick location. Things can be done to ensure that the condition of the space and, and the heating and air conditioning and humidity is not any less than what is currently in existence for those kinds of, that kind of inventory, if you will, in the main branch. As far as downtown, the Fourteenth and Jones location is considered, from the discussions I've heard, the most important thing, the very most important thing, is to minimize any interruption of services. I've heard it from everybody that's been a part of the conversations. So that's pretty important, and it's true. There are supply chain issues and there's difficult schedules and things like that. But the commitment from the city, the mayor's office, in the MOU was made, quite frankly, out of the common interest of both the mayor's office and the board of trustees, the library board of trustees. So any interruption of service that, even the, the first sign that there might be an interruption of service for 30 days or more, the city has to ensure that there's some kind of interim facilities. We've talked about a number of locations for interim facilities, and I think that's something that can be accomplished fairly easily based on what we've heard so far from the board of trustees and, and maybe more importantly, from the library staff. They're, they're the ones responsible to make sure the operation is accessible, that there are the various services available, albeit them may be minimized and are certainly would be minimized in an interim location. But that's, I'm very, very comfortable that there'll be more than two, actually quite a few options for an interim location if that's required. As far as what's being moved and why, it's really important that everybody understands. There's really three different library parts and pieces to all of this. There are, there are three things that take place, and these are general terms, in the current building. There is what would otherwise be branch library services. There are the archival type services, distribution services and so forth, and there's administrative services. The library master plan's really clear, the strategic plan is updated in 2017. Those services from a branch standpoint need to be maintained downtown. When you look at the heat maps, a heat map is, it really shows where the customers come from. The library's done a great job of maintaining that kind of information for all their branches and all their locations throughout the city. And so it's pretty clear that the customers are really, for the branch services, are really coming from the south and a little bit from the southwest. There's also heat maps for all the other branch library locations in the city, and they very clearly show where their customers are coming from. Terms of transportation, public transportation to and from Fourteenth and Jones, there's been a lot of conversations lately about public transportation with representatives of Metro. There, it's not hard to modify some of the routes and some of the times and some of the routes. The times are actually maybe a little bit over difficult than, than the routes, but there can be some expanded service, if warranted, for 1401 Jones. Exactly which roadways it occurs on, which routes it is, whether they're green or blue, or what the numbers are, I, I can't say. But I know I've been involved in those preliminary conversations, and that can be taken care of. So really, the decision before you is whether or not to help this process get going. In terms of a permanent location, piqued my interest listening to, to many of the council members' comments, it's, it's more than just potentially identifying another location or a better location for the branch. Civic Auditorium site was mentioned. It's much larger than what would be necessary for a branch library. So that public use, and, and really whether it was a private use or a public use, that use needs to be thoughtfully incorporated into a master plan for that block or those four blocks. Same thing would hold true for the former UP site currently owned by Mr. Lataha. Could also be said, the same thing could be said for the block between Thirteenth and Fourteenth. That'll be a mixed-use block of some kind in the future. And so I'm just picking those three. There's a lot more than those three. There's things farther north into the Builders District and, and the Makers District and Millwork Commons, and there's undoubtedly going to be things to the south.
And east, kind of.
And east. So the, the branch library first, we need to get it there. We can do wonderful things with the building. There's a great, there's a great lease structure. The city has the opportunity to buy the building. Councilman Palermo, you mentioned you had one set of concerns if the city was spending money in a building that was leased versus a building that was owned. Couldn't agree more. That lease incorporates a provision where the city can buy that building. And then it becomes maybe a bit of a different equation. The beauty of that particular lease is it, it provides for some time here with a big commitment from the building owner to do two things. First, to develop the core and shell of the building so that a tenant space can be, can be completed, and they're willing to pay, contribute quite a bit of money for that. So it's kind of having your cake and eating it too, in a way, with respect to that structure. It's a lease initially. Maybe it's the very best place for the lot, branch, the downtown branch to be forever. And we're going to try like crazy if you approve all this, and were approved in a different agenda item, we're going to try like crazy to develop an environment that the library users not only will love, but grow the number of library users. I mean, that's the goal here, is to grow the number of library users so long as the library staff and the board of trustees can keep up with that. We might find down the line a little bit here that it's, that it's working great. Nobody wants to move it. You don't have to move it. You can stay not only for 10 years, but there's options to stay beyond that, or you can buy the building and stay for as long as you want. Or you could buy the building and move the branch at some other point in time, and you probably have a pretty darn valuable piece of real estate to resell. So I think the lease is structured as well as it can be. Everybody involved, and we were not involved in negotiating the lease, but everybody involved in negotiating that lease, I think, had the right requirements in mind. The market has been scoured, and to meet the criteria, to meet the timing, to meet the price point, and maybe most importantly, for there to be a landlord that was willing to give you the right to buy, to give you the right to terminate, and to stay for quite a while if you choose to do so and you don't want to buy it. You know, that's, 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 that's a, that's a big list. And so, got a landlord here in White Lotus that's willing to do that, and if you move forward, somebody ought to thank them for being willing to, to deliver the flexibility that they have.
Thank you.
I, thank you. I'm here.
Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll try to close out quickly, Mr. President. The, I, I've talked with, with council member Begley a number of times over the last week or so, and, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with, with Danny that there may be a better location. And, but again, I'll go back to what I opened with and, and what Mr. Naughtle just kind of emphasized as well, to say that I really think this gives us the most options. And, and I know there are some that have asked for the mayor's commitment to be open-minded to other possible locations. And I think the way this, these leases are structured does exactly that. I mean, it gives us the option to terminate early if need be. It gives us the option to purchase. It gives, it lets, it gives us the option to let the, the lease term expire, or run its course expire with all the, the, the extension options that we might have as well too. It, it gives us all that flexibility that I think we're all looking for. It may, as Mr. Naughtle just said, it may be, it turn out, it might be the best location in the world. And it may be that other opportunities present themselves over the, the, the coming years with all the other developments that are happening in, in our downtown area. You know, I, I don't think we want to move forward with plans to continue to grow and improve our, our downtown without a library. And I fear that if, with, without the approval of these leases, I, I fear that that's probably what happens. And I don't think that's good for Omaha, because I know with, without a, you know, people will immediately point to, well, you don't have a downtown library now, you'll probably never have one. But that's not part of, of what the holistic plan is for our library system. I mean, there are, our library system, folks, at, at the end of the day, I think will be the envy of, of most cities around the country. I mean, we're, we're looking at an opportunity to have a new main library somewhere, I'll say on the corridor, Seventy-second and Dodge to Ninetieth and Dodge, probably Seventy-second Dodge, that will have an amazing facility that's, that's going to be a, a public-private partnership, potentially. And that's coupled with a new downtown library branch. And it doesn't forget and it doesn't negate the, the, the need for and what will be the eventual development of a southwest branch as well. We will have a library system, as I said, that will be the envy of the country. And this is a first step in that process, and, and I will be supportive of it. One quick note, I did have a, a question on a potential conflict of interest that I did talk with the law department about, and there, there is no conflict of interest, so I, I will be voting in the affirmative on this today.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. There we go. Mr. Anderson, if you could, please.
Kevin Anderson, mayor's office.
I don't always like to get the last word breaker, but it just sometimes fills that way. You might have to. Again, because of the poor execution, there's always questions. And as I hear things, I think about it. And Mr. Naughtle will be up here later, but he mentioned dialogue, and he's a very smart individual. And I'm sure if any deal he was involved with, and the dialogue was a briefing, and then four days later, a, a press conference, I have a good suspicion he would ask the same questions as some of us are. So you mentioned it in pre-council, and you mentioned it today as well, where you mentioned heat maps that show population that is being served by the downtown branch, that a majority are coming from south, which I totally believe that. We have new schools being built, which obviously they build new schools because we have more people. And also from the west, because obviously our urban core is strong. So, yep, and there's the map. Thanks for showing that. You didn't show that earlier, did you, or did I miss?
No, this is the first time today.
Okay.
Last week, I was showing, yep.
Um, is there a date on that map? How old's that map?
This comes from the 2017 update to the facilities master plan. So this is essentially 2017.
Four years old?
Yes.
Okay. So a lot of the data we're using on this three-month, rushed for some, not rushed for others. Lease agreement we have in front of us is based on information that's four years old. And I, I really don't mean to keep going back on the boards and trustees and groups that were involved in this decision, but unfortunately, they were and we weren't. So I, I know that the board of trustees took a vote, and I think earlier we established how many members there are. Could you tell me how that vote went?
It was unanimous on the three measures put in front of them, and that was the two various lease agreements and the MOU that's been submitted into the public record. And it, because I put it up there, this was a, you know, an attempt to kind of provide some color and update to that heat map. This is, had been pulled this week, and it's, it's kind of a, an area depicting the residential unit developments that have gone through the entitlement process and are somewhere in the development stages within a four-block radius of what we consider a walk shed of the Fourteenth and Jones. And this is just over 300 residential units that have been developed since, you know, in the, in the past four or five years since that 2017 plan. So I put that up to, to give a little color and, you know, hope to provide some of an update from that, that four-year-old heat map.
Okay, and these numbers are important. Tell me, tell me what the numbers represent. Are, is there like a, a counter at the door? Is it people in and out of the door? What are, what are the numbers that you're telling me represent?
Uh, yeah, yeah. A library does have that counting system at the door where they can track number of people in and out. I think to some extent, hours of day, hours of, you know, when they have peak demand and, and that sort of thing. So the exact metrics that came into, you know, whether this is, you know, zip code analysis or, or people are writing that, that address, I, I don't have. But this, this, you know, map came out of that study and, and represents where those patrons are coming from over a period of time.
So it's, it's where they're coming from, but if you just have a counter at the door, where do you know where they're coming from?
And, and that I don't know. It came out of the, the study, but I, I, I don't know if, if Laura can provide some color and how did that went, but I think that might even precede her time here. But, you know, we're, we're taking the relevant data from the study.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a great guess. It would probably be based on their address of their library card.
Yeah, yeah. Whether it's, you know, actual kind of withdrawal is, I'd.
Yeah. Is Laura still with us? This might be a question for her.
Yes, Kevin's correct. That data comes from people's library cards. When they use their card in the library to check things out, we know what libraries have used based on zip code. We don't track very much of what our patrons do for privacy purposes, but the one thing we do track is zip code.
So would it, would it be fair to say that the tracking that you're doing pertains to only checking out materials?
We also count people who come in because a lot of people who use the library don't necessarily check something out. They come in to read magazines or do something at the library. So we have door counters that track people in and out.
Okay, show me the map of people in and out, please.
I don't have a map of that, but we do report that in our monthly statistics. We do a couple times a year where we track it for a solid week to get a better look at all of our services. We keep a lot of data on library usage, but not as much on patrons specifically. Nothing that would identify a single patron, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So what that means to me is the, the heat map we're being shown to justify how we vote on a lease agreement for item 56 is based off of zip code for checkouts. But if you're counting people in and out of the door, that means anybody that comes in the door that reads a magazine, somebody studying high school, college adult, somebody that's using the computer, somebody that's applying for a job, somebody that's there to access resources like I was yesterday, that wouldn't be included, correct?
I'm not sure because I'm not sure how that particular data was collected. I'm talking about how we collect data. I believe the heat map studies were from the I believe the heat map studies were from the facilities master plans, and that would have been done by the consultant. And I am not, I can't remember how that was collected. I don't have that information in front of me.
All right, thanks, Laura. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'll say it again. The heat map we're getting information for is based off of checkout data. It's not for those individuals who need the library more than most. Again, read magazines, study, and applying for jobs, accessing resources, using the computers. We're not getting these numbers. But the map up there really makes it nice to present for us of why we should move four blocks southwest. The map's four years old. It doesn't have accurate data. I really wish I would have had more time because I would have so many more questions, as you can see. And I don't want to put anybody on the spot because the people in front of me, ladies and gentlemen, they have a job and they have a family to feed. And sometimes they can't answer the question that I want them to answer, even though they know the answer. So make your decision based on a map that's four years old, that doesn't have the exact data of how many people are actually going to this branch. Again, the branch is getting a wrecking ball. But it doesn't mean we can't be right next door. Can't mean, it doesn't mean we can't be right across the street. We own a lot to the east. We own some property back to the north. We could be much closer because what that data will show you is more people use this library than you think. More people use this library than a heat map of a zip code for checkout only. See, it's unfortunate when people know what questions ask, because then it really opens the door of what's being sold to us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Kevin, one more, buddy. Do you have this map of the showing the parking locations that was sent up to us?
No, I apologize, not on me.
Okay, that's okay. I'll just kind of run through it. One of the questions I had, I think we had talked about it yesterday. It shows where the 1401 Jones spot is, and it shows one, two, three, four, five different locations in that vicinity. 432 spots to the east, 49 to the southeast, 62 to the northeast, 34 to the west, and then there's 90 exclusive spots. It looks like it's, if my old eyes can show me correct, it's on the southeast corner of 16th and Leavenworth Street. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, and and those are representative of the off-street lots available, off-street stalls, correct?
Okay, and and can you just kind of explain if the 1401 Jones is chosen is, you've heard as I have and many of my colleagues, on the safety aspect of that location, and I know Mr. Nodle mentioned that there's some metro tweaks they can make to try to help it more, be more easier to get there. What, how would people, if they're parking across that street, I'm just curious if you can explain going across Leavenworth Street? Because I know I had a constituent of mine, we put some speed traps there last month and got dozens of people that like flying down Leavenworth. So just if you could address that. I know there's a lot of moving parts of that.
And fortunately, the majority of those those off-street lots and stalls are north of Leavenworth. So to the extent you've got those people coming down and and parking in those, there shouldn't be much of a need to directly cross Leavenworth. And, you know, you're crossing your side streets of, you know, 14th or 15th or 16th to to a large extent.
Would there be things that can be done if they do pick, if we if we vote on 1401 Jones, it could maybe address that?
Absolutely. And and not to mention what can be done with the on-street stalls, especially the metered stalls. Working with Ken Smith and Park Omaha, Park and Mobility, there are 236 metered stalls within a two-block radius of the area, and there can be, there are a lot of improvements to be made with those directly on the frontage of 1401 Jones, where we have North Frontage onto Jones, where metered stalls can be made available, as well as handicap-accessible stalls. Park Mobility has done a fantastic job of, you know, especially through the pandemic, you know, piloting and trying out things like curbside pickup, which the library system's also been doing a fantastic job of facilitating. So there's a lot of even curbside management practices that can be implemented to really kind of optimize and make sure we're doing, you know, best management principles for how the site is actually accessed. There has been concern about the brick streets and what that means for ADA accessibilities, but it all, you know, 1401 Jones also has the eastern frontage along 14th Street, which is concrete pavement and and, you know, you can, you know, make those accessible to the extent that you you can incorporate metered stalls and and have those as potentially your your ADA stalls as well. So yes, there there's work to be done to optimize that, but we've got a a very willing and capable participant in in Park and Mobility that can help us out with those best best management practices and principles.
Thanks. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Anderson, so yesterday we heard in the news the Gene Laheemall opening is delayed. And obviously, we heard that's delayed due to supply chain issues. So it's a reminder, we're not in a rush as much as we try to move forward with, again, a branch. This is not going to be the main library. The main library is already destined for Seventy Second Dodge. Before you feel rushed, keep in mind it's going to be very hard to stay on this timeline to make Jones Street work, which means if we're asking and you've you've let us know on the record that you're still willing, depending on how this lease vote goes, to be committed, that we still have time. This will not delay progress. Do not sit out there and watch this and think this is anything anti-mutual, anti-modern streetcar. This is our job of listening to our constituents, most importantly, because that's why we're here, and and knowing that we don't need to be in a rush.
And if I can add.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kevin Anderson, Mayor's Office. Laheemall and the whole Riverfront Project, you know, is is an extremely special project, transformative project, and in large part allowed all of this conversation and exciting announcements to occur. But it's also because it's world-class, very specialized processes, specialized material that were subject to that. And I know, Councilman Palermo, you and I have been watching very closely the build-out of of the new Station 31 in South Omaha, and that's been throughout this pandemic process. And, you know, we've got contractors who've kept us right on schedule with the development of that. So I I do want to say it is, it is possible.
Yeah, what what else is possible is that 1401 moving forward could be world-class. We could, somebody could be here in five years, listening to upset people about not wanting to move from 1401 Jones. But that goes back to the very first thing I said when I woke up this morning on if, and nobody likes to talk about ifs, but it's the truth. This had been brought to us six months ago, would we have been in this position today? Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion in a second to approve item number 56. Roll call.
Johnson.
What is the motion?
There's a motion to approve item number 56.
I made a motion initially. Which motion are we voting on?
This would be a motion to approve.
To approve this?
Correct.
No.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe.
Bagley.
No.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three. Item 57 in ordinance to approve a lease agreement with Frederick Square Limited Partnership in the amount of $405,000 per year for public library facilities, A's Communications and Opposition.
There's a motion in a second to approve number 57. No lights. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. In discussing this item, there was some talk that about the flood plain there, and some of my colleagues mentioned that. And I can tell you from the Papio NRD that the flood, the 500-year flood we had in 2019, there was a lot of damage, obviously, at over a billion dollars at off at Air Force Base that we're all aware of, in Valley, in those areas outside of Omaha. But to be clear for everybody out there listening, the system performed impeccably. The the Papio Creek, that there was nowhere in Omaha that flooded. So that 500-year flood, we were able to withstand any damage in the city of Omaha. And if you look at, Amy, some of us are kind of old, too, the 1975 tornado that come through Omaha, that that came through right near where 84th and Frederick is. My uncle lived off Ninetieth and Center. A lot of people in this room remember that that tornado. I was in my mom and dad's basement as a six-year-old kid, terrified. But Mother Nature, we can't control it. The 500-year flood did no damage out there in 2019. The 75 tornado did damage. So I just wanted to get that on the record for item number 57. Thanks.
Thank you. No further lights. Motion in a second to approve number 57. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to two. Item 58, resolution to approve an agreement with Nodle Development Company, LLC, in the amount of $390,000 to provide owner's representative project management services on the main library relocation, A's Communication and Opposition.
This item was postponed from our January 11th meeting, and the public hearing continues. Proponents, Mr. Anderson, you're recognized.
Troy Anderson, City of Omaha, Mayor's Office, Deputy Chief of Staff. I won't belabor my previous comments during the public hearing, but we did go through an RFP process. We did receive responses. We received one response that was Nodle Companies, and we went through the selection committee process. The selection committee recommended approval, negotiated the owner's rep develop, owner's representative project manager agreement before you, and certainly asked for your approval today. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents that want to speak today? Come on down.
Jay Nodle, 2285 South 67th Street with Nodle Companies. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 58. Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Kim Kalkowski, 1502 South 10th Street. I'm opposed to this because I don't understand, I mean, I don't understand a whole lot about it, but for the $390,000 we're receiving, we are already going through White Lotus, who is the owner of 1401 Jones Street, and they claim on their website that they do vertical integrated management for all real estate. So from, you know, getting a dump that's 1401 Jones Street to a turnkey. And so if they're doing that, I don't understand duplication of services, is there? I'm asking a question.
Thank you. We can, we can ask that question of representatives here in a minute. Other opponents?
Hi, my name's Sarah Johnson. My address is 2316 North 52nd Street. I am definitely an opponent, but as we know, our low-lease citizen and resident opinions don't matter. Mostly here today to just watch you vote for what you just voted for, and I'm pointing at you, Pete, supposedly my representative, who doesn't respond to me. Anyway, I would just like to bring up, from a hiring perspective, I used to be a small business owner and hired a lot of folks. Put your, you know, request or proposal out. When one person comes back, and that's the only person you have to choose from, is one applicant, that shows that the job sucks. So the only person that was confident enough to show up and say, okay, we can make this ridiculous timeline work and act like this is a feasible project, is Mr. Nodle. So again, I know that this doesn't matter. This is probably going to be my last time, so you don't have to look at my face anymore. You're welcome. I'm gone. I just wanted to share how extremely disappointed I am with the four of you that voted, and I know none of it matters, but yeah, see you later.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 501 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Well, the Omaha World Herald had it in there again today, and it gets more confusing every day. It's a different story every day. I don't think you ought to be voting one way or another on this thing. I'm against it because there is no transparency on the whole thing. There used to be a day where we could get the city employees that were maybe under-employees to do the moving for us. I don't know why we can't do that today. Maybe with Mr. Nodle's help, I'm sure he could help direct the employees, but maybe everybody's too spoiled anymore. I don't know. What's the big problem with leaving it where it is? Drive some new pylons and build a bu, a couple more stories high so that they can peek at the people at the other building. This city has blown up a hell of a lot of good buildings to make a moat. Probably gave Conagra a lot of things to take, and then they ran out of town. What's to say that the people won't do that again? And I fail to understand how the city is going to demolish this. I thought the developers were supposed to do this work. Well, we can't blow it up because it's too close to that boat thing we're doing downtown here. We wouldn't want to injure somebody skating around the the block or people going from one entertainment district to another with a beer in their hand. So I think you ought to just put a halt to it and let the rats take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to 58?
Hello, my name is Noah Meekilbert, 530 South 51st Avenue. I was here last week also talking about this. And I know that saying this is not going to make a difference on 58 specifically, but what we have seen through this process, the constant disregard for public input, the lack of transparency, the prioritization, prioritization, sorry, of the needs of billion-dollar corporations over the people of Omaha, is there a reason why I will be leaving Omaha and the reason why your talented and smart and dedicated young people are leaving Omaha? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 58?
Terry White, 1951 South 11th Street, 68108. I was, I appeared sometime back. My speech was kind of shaky. That's because I sat for an hour and 45 minutes waiting, waiting to be seen, and my heart was trying to compensate. I don't see how they can put the library in a 30,000-square-foot space. I don't see how they can separate the genealogy from the history. I have a degree in history. The microfilm of Omaha newspapers is in the genealogy area, and that's integral for the study of history. And if you're studying genealogy, you have to study Omaha history books, related subjects, city directories. It's all of, all of one. And I don't know how you can have a branch at 84th, a central branch, that doesn't have any books. You only have one set of books. And moving books is difficult. I buy paperback books because I've found in the past that moving hardback books is is a real task. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 58?
Hello, Camara Snipes, 1729 South 12th Street. I have a lot of questions, but luckily, my city councilman is here, and thanks to modern technology, I was able to actually text some of my questions, so I very much appreciate that. I just wanted to say that I get it. We already know the decisions have been made long before the public became aware of anything. I don't really consider myself a politician. Many of you know that I was previously elected, but also because I know better. I've been around long enough to know how some of this usually works. I've been around long enough to know how some of this usually works. So let me just offer you some advice, some of which I also offered to Mike Kennedy, the president of the library board, who unfortunately is appointed as opposed to elected. Learn how to communicate. Look up and understand what transparency is. Intentionally listen to your constituents or, as our mayor would refer to us, taxpayers. I am the president of Alliance, but I represent myself today. Let me specify that. But neighborhoods are the backbone of this community. And as the president of an alliance, we haven't heard anything at our meetings. Learn how to listen with intent and not just to respond. Recognize that us as taxpayers have more experience in just paying taxes. Recognize that we're actually quite intelligent, and you can't use five-year-old maps and think that we're going to just not notice that. If the city must sell the property, then what you should do is hear and listen to what your constituents are telling you and build a beautiful state-of-the-art library across the street so it's still accessible and a point of pride for the community. And accessibility is more than what you're giving it credit for. And as someone who rides the bus, yeah, there may be a library in North Omaha. There may be a library in South Omaha. I live on 12th and Center, and I take the bus. You try it for yourself. Speaking of community, know this. The library is the most loved and appreciated part of the city, and surveys have proven that. It might be beneficial for you to understand that when you don't communicate, when you make decisions without the intentional, and I can't highlight enough intentional. Sometimes just pick up the dictionary and relook up what a word means. I do it myself. It does not take away from you. You make decisions without the intentional input of the people that you are playing around with. Again, the most loved part of the city is not the planning department. It's not the Human Rights and Relations Department. It's not Human Resources. It's not planning. It's not the police department. It is indeed the library. And the taxpayers of this city are not going to forget how you treat and make decisions about our library. Who cares what the spin is? This is about righteous decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to 58? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, we like to explain our votes on agenda items. And so I will explain my vote on agenda item 58. Obviously, voting no for the previous two agenda items. Had we had the majority, I would have voted no for this as well. But I understand how this works. And in numerous departments across the city, we only get one bid. It's lowest and best. Well, if there's only one, well, it's both lowest and best. So regardless of how this works, it's the only bid we have. So knowing how the votes have already played out, it's unfortunate, but I know what this is. So I will vote yes for this because it's the only bid we have. It's not going to change anything, unfortunately. Thank you.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And with Councilman Palermo, I was going to make the point that this vote is on whether or not we approve Nodle Development Company to move and manage the project of the move. And I think that there's a lot more to it than just packing up some moving trucks and driving it down the street four blocks. So that's what this vote is about. We've already voted on everything else. There's going to be more votes on the other projects. But we have a vote to make today on whether or not we use Nodle Development Company. And that's all this vote is. And there was an RFP, which means multiple people had the opportunity to bid on this. So I agree with Councilman Palermo, who I appreciate recognizing the difference and understanding what we're actually voting on 58, that if you disagree with the previous two, that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with 58. And so I just thought that that was, wanted to make sure we understood that. So I'll move to approve 58.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you for clarifying tomato, tomato. Item number 56 and 57, I agree with Mr. Palermo that with those decisions being, or with those votes being approved, does put us in a position of making a decision based on business needs, business needs of this city. So yes, I will be voting this up based on item 56 and 57 being approved. And I'd like that to be put on record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, could you just come up for one second? Unfortunately, I think the person who was asking about duplication of services just left. But I wanted to ask you that question so you can clarify that this would not duplicate any services potentially provided by White Lotus.
Jay Nodle, 2285 South 67th Street. Thank you for the question. Two things. The scope of services here involves running a process to a selection process that everyone at the library board of trustees, the library staff, the mayor's office, and the city council will have to approve. So that process will begin immediately to identify a design partner. The same thing will happen with a contractor. It could be one, and actually, it could be one design partner or two. There's two different buildings. Same thing would hold true for a contractor. And so these services are to represent the city and the library. This is not to represent the buildings, nor is it to do work for those building owners of any kind. It's rather to coordinate the work they're going to be doing and the work that's necessary to get the spaces designed, built, and moved into by the library.
Thank you. And then for Mr. White, who asked the question about the genealogy services, just to refer to the MOU I mentioned earlier on today and that I did hand to the city clerk. It does specify specifically in there that the public, 84th and Frederick has to have the public access point for use, review of the entire genealogy collection, microfilm, and historic collections, and appropriate staffing to permit regular access. So I wanted to make sure you heard that language and know that it's all going to be together. Do you have one more question about it? You can come down.
Terry White, 1951 South 11th Street. What they have in books in the main library is about 100 city directories, maybe 200 books on Omaha history. Those have to be with the microfilm, in the microfilm room, to be a unit. So you're taking one half of the animal and put it in one place, another half of the animal at the other place. It can't be done. I mean.
I see. Let me ask Ms. Marlene to weigh in. I think she's still with us over Zoom. Laura, did you catch that last part of the question there? And can you answer?
Yes, we have no intention of splitting up that collection. I know there was some concern that pieces of historic and genealogical collections would be portioned out to different branches. The branches aren't capable of taking anything more than they have, and it would be a disservice to researchers to split things up. We want to keep all of that in one place at 84th Street.
Terry White, 1951 South 11th Street. This is, the history books are not part of the collection. They're supporting material that you have to use in order to use the genealogy collection.
Yeah. Laura, are you familiar with the history books he's describing? And I think what you're saying is those will be together with the rest of the collection, right?
The move will be done in coordination with the staff who specializes in access to that collection. So all of those materials should stay together.
Terry White, 1951 South 11th Street. I don't see how they can separate the two.
We'll connect you with Ms. Marlene afterwards. It sounds like it's a good conversation to have.
Thank you.
All right. No further lights. There was a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 59 in ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to The Filter Shop, Inc., in the estimated annual amount of $81,372.71 for the purchase of air filters to be utilized by the facilities management division.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 60 in ordinance to transfer a permanent easement and land to Magellan Pipeline LP to relocate facilities.
Public hearing on number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 61 in ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement for Antler View to allow for indoor sports and recreation use. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on 61 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Eric Williams with Olson, 2111 North 67th Street. I'm here with a client and available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 62 in ordinance to amend section 20-163 requiring any person charging a tow fee, administrative fee, storage fee, or other related fee to provide a receipt of payment to the person reclaiming the vehicle.
Public hearing on number 62 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none. Any opponents? Okay. No opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 63 in ordinance to approve a parking lease agreement with Logan Hospitality LLC for the lease of 75 parking stalls located at 301 North 19th Street.
Public hearing on number 63 is today. Proponents, please.
Yep, Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, on behalf of Logan Hospitality LLC. Happy to answer any questions. And the building's getting ready to open this week, so we're excited for it.
And you weren't here to talk about towing receipts.
Say that again.
You weren't here to talk about towing receipts, the previous item.
No. Thank you.
Other proponents on number 63? On 63? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Michael, I was just going to say, I know it's old news by now, but congratulations on being named partner.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just to come to more meetings like these. All right.
Appreciate it.
Next item, please.
Non-action items, item 64 through 97 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:02.